All right, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 29th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Tonight, we have a presentation on the recreational marijuana cultivation proposal from Anthony Paranello. All right. Do you wanna get started, Anthony?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anthony Paranello. I'm the president and CEO of Evergreen Strategies. Evergreen Strategies is a Massachusetts-based company, actually, for the time being headquartered in Stowe, where I reside. And assuming we're able to move forward here in Berlin, this will become our headquarters. We will become a vertically integrated company, which means that we will cultivate, process, manufacture, and then retail throughout the state. I'm gonna give you just the standard presentation. I'm happy to take questions, although the last slide says Q and A. There's questions that come during the presentation. Please feel free to interrupt and ask. It's good to have, you know, group engagement. Okay. That's the best we can do here. Okay. So, I've been in the business for six years, here in the state of Massachusetts and New Hampshire, and so I've seen a lot of companies in the space and, you know, worked with a lot of various operators here and other parts of the country. And, you know, from those experiences, I've, you know, created a mission vision and values. And the mission for us is, you know, we wanna provide our customers with the highest-quality product, but in such a fashion that it's grown in manufactured and agriculturally sustainable way, that's also environmentally responsible. So, lighting, you know, water usage, there's a lot of different energy methods that you can use to, you know, minimize your footprint. So, those things are really important to us. From a vision standpoint, cannabis, right or wrong, has a lot of stigmas against it or, you know, for it. And so, what we wanna do is basically just make it normal for folks, whoever wants to use it, in a responsible manner to use it. And for our values, obviously, take care of our customers, support our employees and their families, that's definitely really important, and also support the communities in which our employees and customers live and work. And then, we couldn't do any of those things unless we were adherent to state regulations and, you know, municipal ordinances. So, compliance matters at the end of the day, and really trumps all else. So, just some kinda quick points about us. Like I said, we're in Massachusetts. We've got a strong management team, which I'll get through with some really interesting R and D capabilities. We will be operating three retail locations throughout the state. What we're looking to site here is a dedicated cultivation, manufacturing, also called processing, and a research facility. And research, I don't mean by, you know, human trials, but there's research that we can do in collaboration with other relationships that we have across the country that would drive, like academic, you know, research. It's fun, it's actually pretty interesting. And if permissible, one thing we didn't talk about last week, but if permissible, we would like to also grow, you know, medical cannabis here, too. We think that's, you know, important, if it's permitted by, you know, the municipal bylaw. Again, at the end of the day, it's all about responsible use. So, patient education's really important. Having an opportunity with the chief by chance earlier, you know, Anthony talked a little bit about diversion and just collaborating together. You know, it's important that good, responsible, like practices are employed in the community. I mean, look, right or wrong, cannabis is out there, it's gonna be out there just the same, it's not gonna be out there, I can tell you certainty, anymore, because we're cultivating here. Nothing will be leaving our facility, it just doesn't happen with the state tracking systems that we have to employ, it's just, it's just not possible. But nevertheless, it's important to be respectful of your neighbors and be your responsible, you know, business owner in the community. So, that's really, really important to us. The last point here is we expect, just for context, our first retail store to be open in North Adams later this fall. So, hard to read all this slide, but, you know, in a sense, how does Evergreen win Massachusetts, or why would Berlin wanna bet on Evergreen for being a viable, ongoing, you know, entity? First, on the left there, it says aligned and experienced management team. Management team I have with me, and I'll show you all the detail on those folks later, very competent, very experienced management team. Everybody's aligned, all our incentives are aligned, so you have a team that is, you know, from the top down, even our folks on the front line, whether it be a retailer or someone trimming the plants, everybody's aligned to meet the same corporate objectives. Let alone cannabis, doesn't really, you know, and even big Fortune companies, it's always structured that way. So, we've got a good corporate structure with smart people, you know, at the helm. The second bullet there says compliance and security expert. One of our, one of the colleagues, we outsourced to a firm called AC3, he's a gentleman that runs that, so former Department of Public Health, medical cannabis regulator, he was the enforcement officer, he's also a former law enforcement official, over 20 years on the force. So, we have good, deep, you know, expertise, subject matter expertise in that area. One of our investors started and sold a company that did extracted compounds, like turmeric and lavender and so forth, and sold at Whole Foods and other high-end stores. So, that gentleman is a, you know, he's got deep consumer pack goods experience, because although cannabis is still in the early phase and everyone hears about it, at the end of the day, it's going to, you know, you need people who are really smart and have good consumer package goods experience. So, we have that. And then, when I started the company up in New Hampshire, was the founding CEO up there, we got our build-out done lickety-split. So, I've got experience in putting together a cultivation facility, you know, in a pretty timely manner, so I've done that. Here, I just showed, I've invested a fair amount of money, I've, you know, taken some personal guarantees, so I'm all in. We've got $8 million committed by investors, we're still raising more, and ultimately, our plan is to have 43,000, it sounds like a big number, but of canopy, you know, of flowering space in a greenhouse, and then a 25,000 square foot processing center along with three retail stores. And as I mentioned before, we'll be vertically integrated. So, really quick, that's me. Up until I started this company, I was a CEO of Temescal Wellness, they're down the road in Hudson, you guys may have known them, and I was joking with the police or the chief earlier, if you asked me, like, three years ago, three and a half years ago, and we cited it there, would we need a shuttle, you know, to shuttle people, we thought the parking lot was a find, you know? And I think a lot of folks were, quite frankly, shocked at the amount of demand. So, nevertheless, don't put that against me if it's caused any inconvenience while you're shopping in Highland Commons. Before I ran Temescal, what's that?
I think we've worked it out.
Yeah, yeah. I was the CEO at Sierra Naturals, formerly Wilford Medicinals. So, you know, I've just, I've got a lot of, you know, experience in working with municipal officials and law enforcement and regulators, so I've, you know, I've kinda been around the block in this space. As far as the management team, my CFO is a former PWC partner, he does a lot of CFO work to biotech here in Mass. I shared before, AC3 as the logo for the state, I'm reading from left to right, former regulator of the state, so he's an expert, you know, on compliance and security. The woman, Jean Welsh, she's wonderful, she's a former executive at Rosetta Stone, she's retired, but she's gonna play a strong role in our retail staff training, community outreach, you know, educating, you know, various stakeholders in the community. She's also a medical marijuana patient. She suffers, suffers from a spinal stenosis, and it's really changed her, changed her life and not her, actually allowed her to kinda have like a normal life, instead of being on steroids and other, you know, pain, pain management drugs. And then, we also have a director of cultivation, but I say it's confidential this business is, so cutthroat and challenging that, I just don't put his name up there, because he's currently working for another organization at the moment here in this, in the state. So, our, our, this is perfect, it cuts out Hudson, this is great, in terms of our sites. Yeah, full disclosure, and some of the folks on the board know, but just full transparency, this, I've been talking to Hudson, and we're looking to site also down the street in Hudson, but, you know, we're here because the site is, is much better. My, my feeling is Berlin would likely be a better home in terms of complying, host agreement and so forth, but just for full disclosure, we also are, you know, in discussions, it's all public, you know, with Hudson. But from a, from a retail standpoint, we are gonna be, you know, I've got my host agreement and applications in for North Adams, Belcher Town and Worcester, so Worcester was actually a very competitive process. We were one of 40 applicants for 10 spots, so we were very excited to be chosen by the city of Worcester. They had a very, very, very competitive process. So, you know, again, we know what we're doing, I don't think we're anything special, we're just, we're just, you know, we're competent, we know our stuff, we don't really horse around, and I think, you know, folks like yourself like that, because you want a responsible operator in the community. This is a representation, a schematic, of another company out in Colorado, but the greenhouse is designed is really what I want, that's why it's there. So, we're looking to do kind of a state-of-the-house, state-of-the-art greenhouse here in, you know, in Berlin. So, this is a very efficient, the geometry of the building's a little bit different than your traditional Dutch greenhouse, which has those, the peaks and valleys that you're probably used to seeing. So, very passive, self-contained, pretty, pretty neat technology. And as I said before, you know, environmentally responsible production, obviously, using the sun and LEDs creates the least amount of footprint that would be, that would be out there. And when you're growing, like, in the, kind of, the legacy way, all the, all the operators that started in the medical program a few years ago, they're all growing in these large warehouses where they're really replicating that, really, they are replicating the sun 20, you know, 12 hours a day with these super powerful lights, and just uses a lot of energy, so it costs a lot of money, and it's not as great for the environment, so we're looking to get away from that. And then, also, another key part of this is just water recapture, whether it be rainwater or water from, you know, runoff from our, our plants. You know, we don't wanna put that back in, pay for it, so we just like clean it and then reuse it. So, it's just a better way to be, you know, again, more environmentally responsible. And then, just the last point, you know, how do you, how can you grow in a greenhouse like this? It's all about precision, controlled environment, you can really grow anywhere, we could grow in this room if we wanted to, if we had the right, you know, humidity and temperature and airflow. So, that's really important, but in the greenhouse, it's not an easy thing to achieve, because you have such a large area, so you just really rely on technology to have set points of, like, no greater than like two degrees or, you know, 2%, it's really a, pretty fascinating what you can do. Something that always piques folks' interest is security. The state regulations are actually extremely robust, and I can tell you from personal experience, we cited a retail spot in the door in New Hampshire when I was with Temescal, and the captain I was working with at the special permit hearing, he says in the public session, says, "You know, folks, there's nothing to be concerned about, this is more secure than a bank, than many banks we have here in town." So, I mean, it's like, you know, remember Get Smart? The opening sequence when, when he would walk through the doors, it's about as robust as that. So, not only does it keep people out, but we also have seed sale software, which we literally at the planting of a seed, all the way till when it reaches the counter and a customer transacts, the state knows, we have to be accountable for that, that one plant, all the way through the lifecycle. And they can come in anytime, and we have to true-up, we have to do our, our true-up every day at the end of the day, and that all gets uploaded to the server. So, they're well aware, whether they're there or not, if we're compliant in terms of the plants, you know, tying out, like we all tied out a cash register in high school or college when we're working our summer jobs. So, security is far from, you know, should be far from a concern. And also, and perhaps the chief could, might know, but there's, to the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been any trauma or any incidents of break-ins or, you know, any sort of unwanted intrusions at any of the grow or retail facilities here in the state, going back as far as, you know, when the medical program went live in '13.
Hey, yeah, question, please. Is this going to be round-the-clock operation, or?
So, so, the plants are always growing, so it's the round-the-clock in that sense, but there will not be folks round-the-clock.
No, no.
I mean, our operations, you start early in the morning, and sometimes, you know, you could be there till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, working, you know? Retail is different, obviously, there's, there's parameters around time, place, and manner, but in terms of operations, for cultivation operations, processing, it's not, it's not like the lights are on either. You know, you, with the greenhouse, your, your light's on during the daylight hours, and then you screen it after the 12 hours lapses, and then, so it's not like there will be light pollution either, that's not, that's not fair, that's not nice to, to do that. Community impact. When we get to steady state, you know, I expect there between administrative, cultivation, processing, research to be about 50 people here. As permitted by law, we certainly will give preference to Berlin residents. And something we do in all the other communities, and I think we started doing this before it was started to be mandated by the host agreements, but we'll pick one or two, this is not HCA money, this is our own money, so we'll pick a couple of nonprofits that, whatever, we just find, you know, interesting, or, you know, they provide a strong need at the community, the community relies on them, and we'll give annual, you know, contributions. Like in Worcester, we're doing it with the Southwest, it's called the Southwest Neighborhood Group, and they basically provide after-school care and summer camp to kids of like, you know, very little means. So, the parents can go work, and they can be rest assured that their kids are in a safe place when the parents are working, and I find that really important. So, we're gonna give them like $25,000 a year for sporting goods equip, for running good equipment, whatever they need, snacks, after-school stuff, so, you know, those are the types of things we're into, we're into doing in the communities that we serve. From an economic impact, this is very, very rough math, I don't want everyone to, you know, quote me on this, but I did look at your tax rate, your base tax rate, and I just, you know, I have a little spreadsheet with our anticipated investment. So, property tax, about $60,000, personal property tax, just over $50,000. Again, when we're a steady state, these employees will be, you know, engaged in the community, in, you know, as retail consumers, lunch, dinner, haircuts, banking, whatever, groceries. That's important to recognize. And then, the host agreement, you know, our goal has been from day one, it's been a challenging road, quite frankly, you know, there's been a lot of stuff in the papers about this. In fact, there was a hearing at the State House today, where a lot of advocates and some legislative officials had proposed bill changes to kinda stop some of the shenanigans that's going out there, going on out there in the marketplace. Because a lot of groups, I've run in this a few times, or towns are just saying, "Well, if you wanna do business here, here's what it's gonna cost." It's like, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're gonna ignore the statute, and we're gonna tell you, this is what it costs, you gotta, you gotta pay us this money, and it's like, it's tough. So, today's hearing was actually pretty interesting, I got some feedback, and I sent in testimony, I didn't go testify, but it just happened about a compliance agreement, because what, once the CCC gets their teeth into this and gets control, I can tell you, at renewal, they'll be looking at all these licenses and all, measure the host agreement, and if it's out of alignment or not compliant, my supposition is they're gonna say, you know, you have to cease operations, because it's not compliant. It's like, what good did that do, you know, do anybody? So, we wanna make sure that we, you know, steer clear of running afoul there. But, you know, there are other little things we can do to make it, to make it work and make the wheels turn, but, you know, we wanna, we wanna get advisement and make sure that we're all above board on that. Yeah? And that's it, that's Q and A. Any other questions or comments? Take as much time as you see, actually, Brian. Please.
Yes. So, what's the feedback been? Where you mentioned that you were hopefully going to open in North Adams, so what's been the community feedback, both sides of the fence?
Yeah. So, so I've been doing this a long time. Four years ago, in the medical space, you know, we always joke, and this happens a lot regardless of the town issue, you know, you get, you get your, you get your torches and the, you know, and the haters, the pitchforks, that's definitely waned over the years, you know? Pew Research did a study, I think it's like 63 or 66% of Americans are actually for, you know, legalization. But in North Adams specifically, to answer your question, we had people that showed up that were like, "Yeah, we're all for it." And then I had a pastor of a, of a church, you know, come by and swear at me with his kids in tow. So, I've seen it all, but generally, in the Berkshires, it's more liberal, and they voted, you know, in an overwhelming majority to adopt it. So, I think North Adams is gonna be great. It's a great place, you know, we're gonna help drive some, spur some economic development out there. You know, they were really crushed in the eighties with Sprague Electric left, and they still haven't recouped. I mean, it's still, Mocha is doing well, but they need more, so we'll just be, you know, one hand to help that go, but Belcher Town was, was fine. When we had our cultivation, community outreach meeting for Hudson, no one showed up. Luckily, there was a town official that was there that sat through this, you know, a different presentation, but at least I had somebody. So, it's, it's kinda garden variety.
What about the impact to the environment? I mean, how often are you gonna test air, water around the building? Because I know that that's gonna be a huge concern, what comes out of the building and goes into Berlin Air.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so first of all, on many levels, whatever's, like, in our environment, if it's toxic to the plants, right, it's bad for business, so we can't have anything toxic to the plants, and there's no, we're not allowed to use any sort of pesticide by state statute, so other than an odor, which you may smell 15, 30 feet, depending on the day and the humidity and the moist, you know, maybe about 50 feet away, and even if you did smell it, it's not burning, it's just the natural, you know, odor of the plant at a certain stage in its life cycle, so there wouldn't be any sort of noxious fumes to, you know, to, to a resident that would perhaps be walking by. And then, in terms of like brown water or anything like that, the regulations are so tight, you know, we're not like, was that in Wilburn, the John Travolta movie, they're like all the tanning, right, they're dumping all this stuff into, into the ground, like, nothing like that happens in this space. We can't even use pesticides, so really, like, everything we use is organic. We're not allowed to be called organic, because we're not federally legal, but ultimately, it's a, I'll put it to you this way, the standards are so strict, that when they first got published, someone in the industry tested a potato from Whole Foods, an organic potato, and it failed, because it had too much lead in it. Skepsis honor, truth. Yeah? So, so, you'll be okay.
Okay.
But I'm happy to, if we, if we move forward, work with you in chapter and verse, so you have every, you know, confidence that we aren't not gonna be impacting the environment.
Appreciate that. And then, maybe this question is for Chief Tom in the corner. Do you foresee any additional need for fire, police with this business coming into town?
I would foresee some training, but I don't see any additional personnel based on a business growing a plant in town.
Okay.
And, and something too, like with the greenhouse, something I could see, it hasn't happened in real life for me, but if the police, if the fire guys needed new apparatus, because if there was a fire and the plastic, you know, I don't know what other types of buildings are in town, but if there was some unique thing and we had to, you know, help them get some breathing apparatus, that would be safer if they had to enter our building under, under emergency situation, you know, that could be something highly unlikely, but, you know, something to think about.
Okay. Through the chair, can I just have a follow-up? Will the, will the buildings be sprinklered?
Typically, in my experience, so I, I think the headhouse, the processing building would be.
Okay.
Typically, the greenhouses aren't, because it's a greenhouse, at least that's in my travels, but I would have to work with a little, with the building and, and see how that, I prefer them not to be, not only because it's super, super, super expensive, but whatever the code is.
But there are ways that you're watering the plants.
Yeah, exactly. There's nothing really, you know, especially with the LED lights, it's not that, you know, there's a high kinda combustion, you know, issue. On the extraction side, it's a little different, we do have chemicals, you know, we're using ethanol and so forth, so that would be different. So, in that building, or that section of the building, you know.
The processing?
Exactly, that section where we're doing the extractions, that would absolutely be what's called explosion-proof, or deal, you know, I forget all the different terminology, but, you know, all the, everything's like cased, all the switches, so there's no spark that could ignite a few.
Are there any other questions? Yes?
So, I've actually got a couple. If Trump decides to enforce federal law and shut everyone down, and put a lock on the door, what kinda security will you provide to the community or the town to decommission the building and or repurpose it? I don't know if any other community's asked that question, but it's unlikely, but given...
Yeah, highly unlikely.
Given Trump, anything's possible.
Yeah. I would think if something had happened, it would have been when Sessions rescinded the Cole memo back the first year, when was Trump, back '17? I don't know if the Cole memo was, James Cole is the secretary, he was a deputy AG, Attorney General under Holder, and he wrote, it was called the Cole memo, and there was basically guidance, it wasn't laws, it's guidance for all the US attorneys in the country, and basically he said, this is more like in the medical days, like in '14 and '15, so folks that were compliant, it was basically saying, unless they're engaged in trafficking, you know, laundering money, arms trafficking, prostitution, you know, human trafficking, let them be, didn't have to say have to follow that rule, but everyone did. So, that was written by James Cole under Obama, and then, when Sessions came in, he rescinded that. So, if anything were to happen, to my estimation, I mean, I wouldn't spend the money I spend if I had that factor, it's still a fair question. State requires us to have, you know, systems and procedures in place to kind of enforce that, so we would shut down and destroy all the, all the crops.
But would you be posting some security to ensure that, or not? Is that typically done, or not?
Well, what would be, if that happened, what would be, what circumstances would occur? That would happen then today.
You lock the door, and it becomes like, eventually, a condemned building, and it becomes an asset of the...
Oh, I, but I own the building, and I'm not gonna let that happen. I mean, I would flip it to another use, I'd grow lettuce or microgreens or something.
Got it. Okay, good. Now, you talked about 50 employees, how many constructive, full-time employees does that become? Because I can't imagine 50 full-time, or is that what you mean? 50 full-time?
Mm-hmm.
And is there a carbon-neutral solution?
Carbon-neutral solution? I'm not up on all the vernacular. I can tell you, I mean, I went through a lot of the things that we'll be doing, and we are required by the state to expel, expend no more than like 36 watts of light per square foot. So, by meaning that, I presume we would be...
Well, meaning, you impact the earth in a neutral way. You, you consume electricity, but in exchange for consuming electricity, you do something else to make it neutral.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's possible, or realistic, but is that...
I mean, like, I mean, well, with our, with our greenhouse system, with the LED lighting versus hyp, double-ended hypersonic sodium lights that throw off, you know, 1,000 watts, I mean, those things, this business, we gotta grow. You know, I don't know if like the place in Devon that grows microgreens does this sort of thing, but we'll be compliant with the regulations, and I can speak to you afterwards about, you know, if you have any other ideas.
Okay, I just wondered if you had a strategy, if it was neutral.
Well, I don't know about neutral, I know it's possibly neutral, but compared to our peer group, I can tell you it will be well above them in terms of, you know, impacting, you know, having a negative, negative impact or a larger carbon footprint.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
Doesn't affect Berlin, but you talk about economic benefits, and I'm gonna ask, if a retail shop in Adams and North Adams, I mean, you're just talking a storefront, how many people are you actually gonna be able to employ that has economic impact?
How many people? We'll pay living wages.
But how many people?
Ah, is it 50, here?
Here?
Yes.
I'm talking Adams, I'm just talking a storefront.
Yeah, so like, maybe 10 or 15, it's a completely different operation.
Right, no, I understand that, but I just wanted a clarification, because you used the term economic, beneficial economic impact, which it is, but we're in scale.
Oh, yeah, so we'd be like a normal, you know, maybe like a hardware store going in, plus, we're paying an extra 3%, so there's an extra tax that goes in that the community receives, and then on top of that, we're paying 3% of gross, so it'll be pretty, pretty robust. Any other questions?
I have one final one. So, from the time that the first shovel goes in the ground to break ground, how long before the building is up and operational?
Yeah, depends if we make the winter.
Ish.
Depends if we make the winter.
Okay.
If we can, if we can get the structure up, depending how quickly we're able to move. There's a lot of things, you gotta order, you know, right now, the greenhouse business is booming, as you can imagine, all across the country, and it's not just for, you know, the microgreens and so forth. So, there's a lead time to get these things, and if we went with a US-based or Canadian-based versus like Holland-based, you know, it's a little bit shorter of a lead time, but it's still pretty long. So, it would depend on what configuration we ultimately went with and which manufacturer we went with, but we're very much incented, especially with where the pricing dynamics are in the market now, to get open very quickly.
So, less than a year, six months, nine months-ish? And I know.
So, part of it would be, so here we are, I gotta do site plan, come back, oh, and this is actually great, I have to make a note. So, the short answer is, I could say, I don't know, to be honest.
It's a fair answer.
We would, we'd be very motivated to move quickly, obviously, because we're incented to do so, but it takes time. Work with the municipality, planning, right, get a special permit, so on, keep moving the chains down the field. This site is great, because it's like, the site work is, well, we, we believe, pretty nominal, and these guys are very strong contractors, you know, they've got a proven track record, so that helps us versus having to do three or four months of site work. So, I would love to have this, this, the structure and the skin up before, before the So I would love to have this, the structure and the skin up before, before the snow comes, and then we can do all the plumbing and electrical once the skin's there. That said, I just want to make a quick note, in the bylaw, relative to the special permit, and many municipalities did this, it says you cannot apply for your special permit until you receive your provisional license from the state. Now, those were written by you and many other different municipalities because no one knew that the state would take more than four months to provide a provisional certificate. That said, what's going on now, like I submitted our North Adams application December 6th, Worcester 31st, I haven't gotten anything back from them. And this is like common to all the applicants in the pool. So respectfully, what I would ask is, if we go further, that for the sake, because I'm happy to build a risk and take the financial risk, but I can't really build until I get my special permit. So I would like to, and Hudson was going to do this, or the planners said they would do it. I would like to, you know, we couldn't open, we wouldn't be allowed to open until I got my, until I got my provisional, obviously, but I would be granted my special permit, and then that would be, you know, I couldn't open and receive final okay until, because otherwise I'm waiting, you know, I could wait six or eight or nine months from the state. But I'm happy to build a risk and take that financial risk and then just let the state take their time. So if we go forward, that's something I'll bring up again. And again, I understand the point, you don't want us to open until we have the license. I think that was the ultimate point, but obviously, we wouldn't be able to do that anyway by the state.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
I have one more. So you've filed the same application in Hudson, and how far along are you in Hudson at this point?
Yep, so just to be technical, per se, as we're on tape, I haven't filed an application per se.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so you've done the community steps.
That's exactly right. And then I've just spoken with them, I'm waiting, I've been waiting now for probably three weeks, four weeks for the new draft HCA. I'm still waiting for it. I surmise it's taking a little longer because they probably heard that this hearing was happening. I didn't find out until last week. And I presume they're probably getting some outside counsel. I don't know, I'm hypothesizing at this point, but, so I'm basically just waiting, and then I'm just working, I'm working on the deal with the landowner there too. With the landowner, the land is significantly different. It's a, the geography is, we could have retaining walls as high as 30 feet, and that costs a lot of money to do that, so.
Okay.
This site is, you know, also very attractive. They have Hudson Light and Power going for them, but we might build, try to do a co-gen unit, which would offset, which would certainly minimize our footprint.
Is the only town approval you require the special permit from the land board? Is that the only?
No. No, we have to get a host agreement.
Host agreement actually will come first, Peter. From the town, the town and the proponent need to execute a community host agreement before the proponent can even file the application at the state.
I need, and that's the first.
But which of our boards has to approve that?
Can I just give Peter this, just help?
The select board typically, or the town, depending on how the town tackles it.
I have it online.
Selecting to the host agreement.
Yeah.
Selecting to the host agreement.
Yeah, thank you. So the order of operations is, you know, presentation like this, we would engage, if there was an interest to move forward, we would have, you know, I would put something forth, the town might put something forth in terms of a host agreement, you know, language. Town would probably go, you know, seek counsel on that guidance, on that document. They would lob, you know, like any other sort of contract negotiation, they'd lob a version over, I take it to our council, and then once we came to terms on a host agreement, that would then allow me, unless I have control, you know, finish up our business deal, we would then submit to the state.
No more questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the...
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll move on to the recreational marijuana retail proposal.
Thanks, Lisa.
Well, you can keep it. I have it online.
This is Steve Menon Casa and John Grenier.
So we're...
You have slides? You have slides?
Oh.
Well, we have some of the site.
Oh, we have the site. We have the site. So it's more secret that I tried to permit another type of development in this project there for the last six to eight months. I'm a residential builder from Westboro, and that project did not go forward, so we're open to the cannabis, and we've, we're working with Anthony on the cultivation portion of it, and we're going to engage Anthony as a consultant for a retail establishment. So we are planning on building a, we're planning on proposing a retail component on the site that would, we'd like to propose to put three pads over there, three, maybe 2,500 square foot pads, of which the cannabis retail facility would be one of the components of that. And we would operate that with the guidance of entities as a manager. So we haven't broken the site out, this is the site itself. I don't know, John, you want to talk about the site itself?
Yeah, so just, I mean, for, in case, I'm sure there are some people who weren't following what we had, our previous proposal, but just for location, this is River Road West, heading towards Hudson. We kind of back up to the Solomon Pond Mall, I believe that's where the target is located. Here's the rotary, the second rotary, as you're coming.
John, go on the other side.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, from South Street, so.
No, you go on the outside.
Okay. Sorry. So this is, the entire parcel is about 50 acres. The location that we're concentrating on for both Anthony's project and for the retail establishment, we'd be on this 30-acre piece, which is primarily the old sand pit. It has quite a bit of frontage on River Road West. So in discussions with Anthony for his needs and his, for the greenhouses, for the building, we'd be coming up with some site plans and site designs that give him enough area to house his needs. And then on top of that, we would be looking at having a retail location in another portion along the frontage. So, and just kind of thinking out loud, you know, where he would have his greenhouses and some of his other buildings, they could probably be more at the rear portions of the site. You're not looking to have any visibility where we would, for the retail operation, we'd probably be looking for something where you're going to have some visibility along River Road West. And the other thing that Steve was thinking about was, instead of just having the standalone one building, if there could be in discussions with the board to have some other types of businesses that might be complementary, so that we're not just having one standalone building, there might be something that could generate, you know, traffic and provide something that would have a good base for, you know, bringing people into the site, they're not going to just go there for, you know, whatever they're going to be buying at the cannabis store. There could be some other accessory, you know, types of uses that we could implement into the site as well.
So hopefully, when the businesses would complement each other. Also, the site is a 57-acre site. We have not decided how we're going to configure the whole site. So John just brought up the front 30 acres there. We haven't fully got to that point right now, but we also, we're working towards solar and possible cogeneration with gas. But we have nothing, you know, no contracts or anything, but we're investigating those options.
Exploratory phase. It's exploratory phase.
Yeah, exploratory phase.
But we're highly motivated to do so. Steve, do you want to, if I say a couple things?
Please do.
So just in terms of like, you know, citing the retail, I know it's zoned, another important feature that if there would be at least a 500-foot buffer, because that's in the bylaw between the retail and the cultivation facility. So we would obviously satisfy that need by being somewhere in the back or the least desirable part of the lot. You know, I don't really care where we are, as long as the sun, you know, everything's positioned to the sun correctly. But from a retail standpoint, you know, I think it's like, quite frankly, it's a sleeper in a good way. You know, the mall's three, four minutes away from there. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, we're not, in the business, we say, it's like a destination, people aren't buying milk, and that's convenience or gas. They'll come a little bit further to get, to get this use because of the products, because there's just not a lot of them out there. So.
Well, number the other sites do, and what congested areas, has there been a traffic, parking problem in the other areas? We see this is...
The goal would be, obviously, have sufficient parking, so there wouldn't be shuttles, and we'd want to make it easy for everybody. Because at the end of the day, that's going to become like a sticking point for customers. Do I have to go an hour early to go buy a product, to hop on a bus and, you know, it's just, it's a lot of work for the customer. So having something more simpler patient experience, customer experience is absolutely, you know, from a retail standpoint, from a cannabis retail standpoint, the way to go. And again, I didn't talk about, I probably talked about cultivation in my presentation, but I've started, you know, designed, built out, and opened up retail facilities up in New Hampshire and Mass, so I've got a lot of experience there. And on the recreational, but they use the word adult use, I just think it's better. Recreational sounds irresponsible, but no one under 21 can come in, that's it, period, full stop, not allowed. They can't cross the threshold, they're not 21 years old. They can't bring their kid in, and we don't like people leaving their pets with their kids in the car either. So we have those in our kind of do's and don'ts. So right when they walk in, what's the, what's good behavior, what's bad behavior? No consumption on site, it's just not permitted if we see it. I mean, we literally, depending which, you know, you're not welcome here, we'll call the police, because it hurts us, it doesn't make us look good, it makes us look like a irresponsible, you know, business owner. It's not permitted. There's no loitering. People come in, come out, they do their business, and they leave. You know, what they do once they leave our store, just like a package store, you know, we can educate them, that's part of our responsibility to the community. And if there's certain, you know, channels that you want us to focus on, we will. And our own literature, or I should say our own, their own literature, we'll just be providing the back office, kind of, you know, help them get through the process and make sure they're successful. But they'll be on the website, it'll be on the do's and don'ts when they leave, you know, enter the store and leave the store. There'll be, you know, handouts in the beginning, what to do, remind everybody, like what's permitted and what's not. And something that we did up in New Hampshire that worked well, we would give pictures to the police department of all our products and their packaging, so they knew if something, somebody was lying during a traffic stop, it was, hello, it was obtained. So we'll do within reason, you know, as long as everyone's reasonable, what do we have to do? Cameras too are good on River Road. We typically point them at the road because there's no cameras down there. I don't know if that's a big area, but if you get a lot of action down there, bad action, but, you know, put those on the road. And not that they need a direct feed, but if there's a problem, you know, we have to keep the tape for 90 days, whether it's cultivation or retail, any sort of activity. So if there's a problem, they can come and fetch the tape in, you know, at a particular time, and so it can be helpful.
So I've had a number of meetings with cannabis retailers that were interested in the site, and after meeting with them, I came to the conclusion that they don't, most of those don't have much experience themselves. And I think with Anthony as a managing, I think I could run it better, honestly. I really do. I mean, I'm, I have a good business sense, I have the financial capacity, I have, I have a good reputation, I have a good running business, that my integrity is very, very important to me. So I'm not going to take any shortcuts on here either.
And our, sorry, and all our people have to get also approved, you know, go through background checks, and that can also happen at municipal level, because sometimes like in the, especially if there's an alcohol license involved, many times the general manager has to be approved by the board of selection or the planning board, whoever the special permit granting authority is, I think it's the planning board here. So, so that's the ZBA.
I think so.
So it varies, yeah, varies by town. So that's important. So, you know, you'll have their telephone number, or the police will, they'll have my number. You know, I live in Stowe, so if there's a problem, you kind of come right over. But again, there hasn't been any problems, but I think that's important to know also, that there would be a hand in, like, the person meets the qualifications, we're not going to say, hey, you know, can't, you know, hire this person, they're not competent enough, but in terms of their background checks and make sure that they're, you know, of suitable moral character, you know, that's obviously something that you'd have a, you know, say in if we're able to move forward. That's important, you know, and having that person's contact and information's important. And then obviously, you guys govern the hours of operation. I don't remember what the hours of operation standing here right now, but I think it probably ceases at either 8:00 or 9:00 PM the latest, in terms of retail. So.
Steve, the chair, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So you're going to have a working relationship with the proponents on this project, and it's my understanding that it's a completely separate project, meaning a separate community host agreement, a community, a separate community outreach meeting, although they could be scheduled close in time to each other. So is your working relationship with the proponents of the retail shop going to continue beyond construction and startup? Is that what's, is that what's intended?
We would be there in perpetuity, as long as they own the business, we'd have a relationship.
I see. And the CCC, is that, is that common at, has that been common among other?
Yeah, so you may have seen, good question, you may have seen a couple, a couple months ago, there was a, the Spotlight team of Boston Globe had this huge story. It wasn't, but they're obviously most noted for, didn't get that sort of noriety, but there's like three or four cannabis operators that were very, I'd say, not transparent about their relationships. And the reason why it would work this way is because by statute, I'm only allowed to have three. And there's no funny business here, right? They're the owner, they're the operator, they're the applicant, but like in many businesses, especially in healthcare, you hire a company to help you manage that particular line of business. And so the same thing would happen here. So we're not owners, we don't have control or authority, all the business decisions reside with them, but we're going to do all their policies and procedures based on our years of experience. We'll help them hire and train their people based on our experience, help them run the store day to day, but not, you know, they call the hactic.
You're not the licensee.
We're not the licensee. So based on that, and then not owning more than 10%, we're, it's permissible. You know, no one, no one entity, like if you could have unlimited amounts of ownership in, say, a dozen operators, as long as below 10%. So those are the things. And then obviously, it would be convenient for us to sell them product, you know, from the cultivation facility, but we're not going to, it's not fair, it's not reasonable, say, you have to buy 100% of our product, that's not fair, you're putting them at a disadvantage. So maybe it's 30, 40%.
That was going to be my next question, to see if you could actually sell the product from that cultivation facility to that retail facility.
Absolutely can. But like I said, that Spotlight article, there was a lot of things that were going on, you know, they would give, you could call it predatory lending, you know, to a group of, let's say, socio-economic folks that were, you know, social equity applicants, but they don't have a lot of resources, oh, gladly, we'll gladly rent you money, but we're going to charge you 20%, you have to buy all your product from us. That's not, that's not right. And even those guys don't fall under that status, it's still not fair. You have to do what's reasonable. The business has to be, the relationship has to be sustainable, and no matter who would come into that seat and say, yeah, that's a fair deal, that's how it has to work in order to be successful. So that's, that's how I've done it in the past, and it seems to work, so. But we would be there guiding them, to answer your question directly, we'd be there guiding them, assisting them through the, through the time they own the business.
Okay. After having a number of meetings with different retail personnel, we decide, we think with the entities at manager, we think we can do as good or better, and then the people we will talk to.
And just to be clear, it's not like a quid pro quo, because they looked at other people that were analogous to me, who also wanted to cultivate and help them with retail. So it's not like they're cutting me in because we want to buy land from them, you know, it's, they looked at people that were of the like.
So these two are co-dependent, so that if you went in Hudson, you would still be pursuing this use?
I have nothing to do with Hudson's site.
No, if I went to Hudson.
If I went to Hudson. I'm just asking, you'd still continue pursuing your use?
Oh, yes.
Even if he goes to Hudson?
That's right. And we would still provide services even if we went to Hudson.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a question. I have a question. Given the division in this town, you have people who are greatly for and people that are greatly against pot in any shape, form coming into town.
As it is everywhere.
As it is everywhere.
Correct.
So yes, Berlin is not special in that capacity.
Right.
And I don't know if you've gone that far yet, but what are your plans to educate, inform the folks in town so that people are making a decision or can come up to you with questions based on information and not just from the heart, oh, no, it's bad, or yay, it's good.
Well, I think that'll be the handle at the community outreach measure we have.
And we would have a, the content there is mandated about the state, but that's when you often get folks that come and voice their opinion.
The pitchforks and the...
That's right. And look, and respectfully, what we say is, we're here because the town voted to allow us here. So we're only coming here because there's an invitation, so to speak.
Okay.
We're not the one paving the way to, to, to make the zoning happen. That's from the time. And that's a point, unfortunately, and I see this every time, a lot of, a lot of residents just don't, they don't understand like the quote-unquote legislative process in the town or the, you know, the city they live in. So they think that we're the bad guys coming in and we're the ones spreading, you know, it's like, no, no, we're here because, you know, zoning allowed this use or is, wants to allow this use. So, but that said, other than being yelled at and cursed at, you know, I'm pretty tolerant. So if someone yells and curses, we just ask them to leave because it's our meeting, right? It's our meeting and that behavior is unacceptable. If they come and they're, and they ask thoughtful questions and they're respectful, I'll stay there for as long as we need to, you know, to give them guidance. But unfortunately...
We're not going to get 100%. We know that.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
But it's, yeah, but it's also, I've never had a riot either. I mean, that guy who came in in North Adams, you know, he just wasn't really thinking. But that's the worst I've, I've had, other than, you know, other people keep asking the same questions and they want to be difficult, but you answer the question, if they don't get it, you say, look, I'll meet you after the meeting.
Do you have informational, printed informational material that you hand out at the meetings too?
We can, you know, we can have that. If you guys feel that would be something that would be important, I mean, we can put some fast facts. I mean, I, what I typically do is I go through the presentation, which again, which is state mandated, and then I'll have a couple of slides at the end that are not up there, but if, depending on the questions from the audience, like, hey, it's a gateway drug, you know, for example, you often get that. And then we'll show data and I'll tell some personal experiences of counseling patients in New Hampshire that you could really look at it as a step-down drug, not a gateway drug. Yeah, I could talk for hours about this stuff.
Just for your own informational too, you might want to look at our last two town meetings.
Okay.
But they voted though, but you guys voted the...
We did.
But you still need to watch.
But it's probably just for your own information, it would be something that you would want to investigate.
Just a question, you mentioned other buildings on the site for other, you said complimentary type businesses, but looking at like a strip mall? Or is this, you know, a couple of separate standalone buildings that one may sell paraphernalia type things or separate type businesses like a...
We haven't decided the exact configuration, but we're thinking three buildings, one would be cannabis and the other two would be complimentary. And we don't even fully know what would be permitted by the town. And then we need it to make sure it makes good business sense also.
But it wouldn't be, we are allowed to sell, chief, we are allowed to sell paraphernalia in the store. So we were going to do a project up in Salisbury where we had to lend, you know, developers and we were to be there, they're going to put a restaurant next to us, they were going to put a dry cleaner. You know, I'm not saying that's what's going to go here at all, but I'm just saying something that's complimentary is a bit of a draw and you get some action, you know, more retail action pulled from them all to come over here.
Thinking traffic impact, we've seen traffic impact with some of the dispensaries already.
Sure.
And you would have residential neighbors on your sides and directly across the street and concerns in the community that that's going to cause.
Oh, yeah. And, and one of the things that, again, if it made sense to put it there and everybody was for it, I mean, the last, like, we are not allowed to open, I don't think this isn't statute, but the CCC has required us, like a retail shop cannot open like 45 days before, you know, because the timing is very, it just, it moves quickly and the state at the end says, okay, you know, we think you're going to be open in 45, 60 days. We have to give like a parking and what's called a crowd control plan to you.
Part of that.
And we can't, exactly. We can't open until you bless that and have all the things in place. But again, it's loitering. There's no, there's no funny business there. Everyone, you know, we would have security guards, no one has any firearms, but just parking, not attendants, whatever you want to call them, that are shepherding people in and out, especially in the beginning, but it was also over sensationized a bit. I mean, if there's only two markets, two supermarkets open in the state, I mean, what would happen? Or gas stations for that matter. It was tough. That was obviously an unintended consequence of light, lights there in Northampton. You're not seeing that type of traffic anymore now that there's about 20, 21 stores open. So not to say there wouldn't, you know, we'd want a big bang when we open, that, if that happens, but it'll be done, you know, professionally and respectfully with everybody's, you know, blessing and, you know, it's not our first time with the rodeo, so we would have, you know, all the steps in place to have minimal impact.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to add? Did they not even?
No, I didn't. They only go to...
Okay. Do you have anything? So through the chair, I just want to make sure I give another snapshot of, of next steps here. There are two separate, two separate potential proposals here. The town now, the board, would have to determine if it wants to proceed with preparing a, a community host agreement, and that would be the next step, or not one community host agreement, we'd have to do two separate, two separate. And we'd be negotiating with each party separately. Based on what we've heard and the status of the Hudson proposal, I think the proponents, the proponent of the cultivation facility would want to move on this rather quickly. So I think, I think it's imperative that the community be involved every step of the way. So I think that when the board does decide to take this matter up as to whether to proceed, there, I think the community should be notified well in advance so that, you know, so that residents can come and attend and, and say their piece before we move and we invest time and staff resources to, to the negotiating of the agreements.
Mm-hmm.
So do the proponents have any, anything else to add as far as timeline?
No.
No?
No. I mean, obviously we're highly motivated to get kind of a yes or a no, quick, you know, as soon as reasonably possible. So if that made sense, to have a outreach meeting first and, you know, get feedback and provide some education perhaps about what that meeting is about, you know, ahead of time, you could email out whatever you think is appropriate. Happy to help you put something together, piece of, a little piece of literature.
Yeah. I guess I have a question for you, Margaret. Since the land is zoned properly for this use, what would be the reasons to say no? If we were going to say no? Or can we say no?
I think the first, the first thing would be lack of an agreement on the community host agreement. If you, if the parties can't come to agreement.
If you can't come to an agreement, then yes, I can understand how it would fall apart.
That would be, that would be, that would probably be the obstacle.
Right.
And then if we had the agreement and then we proceeded the special permit and of some reason we weren't prepared or, you know, there's what, eight or 10 points you have to meet? And if we were, if we didn't meet those from a satisfactory standpoint, but that would be after, obviously, well after the host agreement was signed, but that still would be the ultimate, you know, kind of hook that, you know, the town has to control time, place, and manner by granting the special permit.
So you're...
That would be the case for both operations, cultivation and, you know, cultivation, processing, research, and retail. You have the same control, time, place, and manner.
We were thinking we had, we had to do the host agreement as one of the first steps.
Yes. That's, and that's true. Yes. The host agreement would have to be negotiated first. So now it's a...
We have a community meeting.
Yeah.
And we have to go to various boards for site plan approval, the ZBA, and we always go to the planning board also, you know, because the input is valuable.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's accurate. So it's the host agreement. Now it's, it's going to be in the board's hands as to whether to proceed with entering into negotiations on a host agreement. You meant, Anthony, you, through the chair, I want to be sure that I use proper protocol. Anthony, you mentioned seeking a variance or a waiver on the special permit for the, what was it called? The...
So that was for the...
Provisional license?
So I understand, in reading the bylaw, a special permit can't be granted until you have like a provisional license.
Okay.
And again, with many municipalities, because the statute says, once deemed complete, the campus control commission has 90 days to basically say yes or no on your application. And if you have a compliant application, just like a special permit, very hard to deny.
So you'd be seeking that variance or waiver in order to?
To get my special permit. Because if I had my special, but obviously I would, so in a perfect world, that would be, that would be waived. And then, but it would be a condition, obviously, of us opening, if you have the license, obviously. But I wouldn't feel comfortable taking the financial risk to do the build unless hell I had a special permit. And then, because I know I'll get my license, because I know I'll have a, you know, I've done this many times, we'll have a compliant application, we'll get our license from the state, but I can't control, you know, I can't, I can't, the special permit process can be, can vary quite differently from town to town. So if that happened, if you guys were willing to do that, I think that had to be a change, you know, or just actually part of our expectation before the ZBA, we would ask for that. And all we're trying to do is, I think ultimately, many towns, because no one knew they'd be taking six or eight or 10 months for the state to deem you complete, they just wanted, because no one knew that when they drafted all the bylaws or ordinances. So I think it was just, the intent was just to make sure they were eligible to apply, but no one knew that it would take this long. So it really puts everybody at a disadvantage because, you know, just the state's taking a long time at this point.
And just, just a quick to clarify, because it is zone, as Chris mentioned, is zone limited industrial, we're sort of honor-bound to, to work with them on a host agreement and see if we can come to an agreement. Is that accurate?
I think that is accurate, yes.
Okay. So we really don't have a yes/no decision. We, we kind of go forward with this either way?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make that very clear.
But then, yeah.
And we may not come to an agreement, but we have to work.
That's right. We have to at least advocate, hopefully in good faith.
Discuss.
You know, to put our best effort forward.
All right. So if the board so chooses, we could add this to the August 5th agenda for discuss, discussion and action on, on whether to proceed with a, or on proceeding with a negotiation.
Yeah, I think it's on proceeding.
Yeah.
There's no...
Okay.
Okay. Got that in your notes?
No, I got it.
Between now and August 5th, if there's any information that we can give the board, you know, we obviously want to, so that when we have August 5th meeting that, you know, and that's the body has as much information as they can.
Next Monday.
That's the BOs.
Next Monday.
That's next Monday.
Next Monday.
Every week. My son is going by way.
Summer is every other week. We weren't supposed to actually meet this week, but we had an emergency sort of thing we needed to handle and you got sort of tucked in on that.
Great.
There you go.
Yeah. So that'd be fine. Yeah, next, if there's any questions, you know, in the meantime. But, but ultimately, what I've seen happen is the town, municipality would say, please give us a draft, or they'll have town council prepare a draft and say, you know, here you go. I'm happy to proceed either way. You know, I have some experience, I'd be inclined to give you our form, but however you want to proceed.
Yeah. So I think over this next week, Mary and I will do some due diligence and pull up, pull up a community host agreement, be in touch with legal and just to get the ball rolling on it.
And I'm happy, I can send you some ones that I've, you know, sent around to other municipal leaders, so they have an idea of kind of a catch-all, like five or six, that you just see a wide array of...
Yeah, and I, and I can reach out to my colleagues and gather some too.
That's right.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for coming.
Thank you for having us very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Yes.
Actually, the boss lady on the other side.
We've got just a couple more items. Margaret and I had a meeting, a couple of meetings about the fire chief search. Sorry. I guess I'm just talking to myself here.
Come closer. You like that? You like it in the back off camera?
Yes, and if you can't hear, that's on you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Margaret, do you want to bring the board up to speed on the fire chief search? Sure. This is primarily on the, on the interim. At the last meeting, we talked about the MRI being able to provide a contracted interim chief for $90 an hour for a certain number of hours a week. Since then, we, we have learned of a, of a new, of a new possibility who, who wasn't on any list. This is a retired chief who brings 44 years of municipal fire service experience in a single town at that and has been highly involved in, in statewide, national, and other fire service activities. He is, I think I probably already said this, but he is a retired chief. I, we now have had, I've had the chance now to talk to him twice, once on the phone and once in person. This is a very professional, in my sense is that he's a very professional, competent retired chief who understands, who understands what it takes to operate a, a municipal fire department. I would like to propose, my, I'll give you my recommendations, I'll spell them out and also suggest board action for tonight, one simple piece of action. So my proposal or my recommendation would be to invite this retired chief to the board's meeting on August 5th for an interview. I ask that the board members each submit two questions for the interview. You can do kind of a roundtable interview, he can be introduced to the community at that meeting. And if the board decides, if the consensus is to move forward, I would ask that the board convene executive session with the candidate to enter into an interim chief services agreement with the candidate. At that same meeting, I would ask that the board appoint the current, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but I would ask that the board appoint the current acting chief as acting deputy chief for the, the interim period that, that the chief is going to be here. Restoring the acting deputy chief's appointment to the, the rank of captain again, so restore that. And then after the board meets in executive session to discuss contract negotiations, provided that they are successful, to come out and just announce the tentative agreement on the contract, the term of the agreement, the, the wage portion of the agreement. Tonight though, acting chief Concanon's term, appointment term currently expires on July 31st, and this meeting with the board on the interim chief is not going to happen until August 5th. So I would ask the board to act tonight on extending acting chief Concanon's term through August 5th so that we can give this, the new appointee, have that time to take, to take office and get started. So that's the one item that I would ask the board to act on tonight. As I mentioned in the last meeting, and I'm mentioning again, the interim fire chief, the contract terms would be negotiated just as they would with, with MRI or another organization. This would be with an individual. The contracted duties, my recommendation would, would be that they include all of the duties of fire chief permitted by the job description and his current licenses, so within statute, and that the duty should include but not be limited to analyzing the and that the duty should include but not be limited to analyzing the department's culture, operations, responsiveness, and sustainability through the meetings with personnel in the fire department, gathering data and things of that nature, and then to provide a report to the board at the end of his term or close to the end of his term. Permanent chief search and selection process, this is, there's no, no change from what I recommended last week. The only difference is that I had recommended last week to begin on August 8th. I think we need to determine the date based on the interim chief taking the position here, hopefully, and, and kind of getting his feet wet and determining how best he's going to conduct this analysis. So I don't want to rush the interim position because we're moving forward with a permanent, but I don't want to, I don't want the town to drag its feet either on getting a permanent in here. So those are my recommendations for tonight. I hope that made some sense.
Questions, discussion?
I move to extend Jim's contract through August 5th.
Okay, do you hear it second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is this interim person, Margaret, you're talking about the MRI person or someone different?
This is someone different. This is outside of MRI.
Good for you.
This was a, this was a team effort, I have to say. Everyone, everyone was like...
Yes, Ms. Modest, Ms. Modest select person, yes. Right place, right time.
Okay.
So I asked that the board get me the interview questions, two interview questions each over the next week.
Okay.
Are you now releasing his or her name intentionally?
We are not until the 5th. Or it will actually be on the agenda. It'll be on as an agenda item, so we'll have his name on there and, yeah.
Okay. Was there anything else?
Because we don't know for sure.
Was there anything else on the fire search? I don't think so that I remember. Then we can move on to the Mass FY '20 COA van funding, and a letter to the legislators has been drafted. No one had a chance to read it, assuming?
I'm just wondering, did we actually clarify now that Worcester Regional, that they will not operate here or?
It's, so, I met with the Boylston Town Administrator today, and their situation was similar. So they thought the same. They thought that when the appropriation was made through the legislature, that WRTA was going to purchase and have control of the van. And Boylston was very concerned because they do runs into Middlesex County as well. And so they did end up executing an agreement with WRTA. WRTA had to make the expenditure and then turned the van over to the town of Boylston. And it's Boylston's van and they're able to do runs with it. So in the letter that was drafted and subsequently revised, we kind of gave an overview of what Berlin, what Berlin would prefer to see, and we asked the legislators to support moving forward with WRTA as the purchaser of the van and then turning it over to the town.
Okay. I was just wondering, so the way it's currently in the budget, that could not happen? We have to make this request?
I don't think, I don't know that it can't happen, but I don't think it's clear enough in the appropriation that, I don't think, you know, it doesn't say, for example, WRTA shall, shall make the expenditure of 60, at least $60,000 and then turn it over to the town. That's what we want assurances on, so I'm going to reach out to the, to the WRTA executive director, and I'm going to have a one-on-one conversation while the legislators are hopefully contacting WRTA as well and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay. So if things should change for some reason, then would we, we would need to redraft the letter?
We would need to, we'd need to take a different course. If we find out that that's, it's not happening the way it happened in Boylston and the way we think it can happen this time, we'd have to take a different approach if we want Berlin to have control of the van.
So this is not going to go out right now or?
It is, it's going to go out simultaneously with me reaching out to WRTA. So that's the intent.
Actually, I did get sort of a confirmation from Hank Knottin about, yes, this is how Boylston did do it, the way that we're doing it right now, and that we should, it should work for us. So he perhaps knows, you know, maybe what you're going to find out.
There absolutely has to be an agreement in existence. I had the, I was able to get the state contract form from Boylston today, which kind of showed the steps they went through. And we're not, we're not paving a new path here. We can use Boylston as the example because they went through the same, the same process.
As long as we can do, still do the runs that we do with the, you know, the council on aging van.
Have to be able to get to Marlboro and Hudson and...
And if that's not going to work, then we'll have to do another, try something else.
All right, so, yeah, I'm going to reach out to WRTA. We can send this simultaneously to the legislators and we can all be in touch with WRTA and coordinate this.
And hopefully for the best, right?
Expect the best.
Expect the best, all right. So do I hear a motion to sign the document, sign the letter?
Motion to adjourn. Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Other new business? Is there anything?
Just a couple weeks ago, I had asked about the blinky sign and to change it for keeping trash on the minds of people. So kudos to the town on Facebook. There were a lot of great responses, there were some that were funny that unfortunately can't be published, but made me chuckle, and an even bigger shout-out to Highway for putting up with my email for changing the signs, but it just, it just goes to show the goodness of the town that if you ask, they will do. So thank you to the town. So we should have a new one going up. I didn't go by today, but probably every week, every two weeks, we'll have a new message up on the board.
So this week it was knock-knock, who's there, not your trash?
Yep.
I think that's, I think that's great.
Yep.
I think that's great.
So the next one will be $10,000 fine for littering, hashtag, is it up? Hashtag Berlin Pride. So that's what we're going to stick on the bottom of all of them, hashtag Berlin Pride. So, you know, hey, if you keep it in front of people, then maybe they'll see it, but it was a good, a good response to the town, so very, very happy with that.
Good. Anything else? And, let's see, that was other new business, old business, Town Administrator Report.
The only thing I have tonight is that I got a call from the Community and Economic Development Coordinator in Clinton today. Clinton is going for a Mass Works grant of one and a half million dollars, and they're going to be looking for a letter of support from Berlin. So I told, I told him I'd introduce it tonight at the board's meeting for execution on the 5th.
Okay.
Okay. Only one thing, Margaret? You've only done one thing? Compared to last week where it was like, turn the page, turn the page, turn the page?
Wow.
This was a special meeting, so you got a special report?
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Next week I'll go back to the two-pager.
Okay, all right, as long as it's a flip-up.
Okay. Well, we have no need for an executive session, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.